All right, welcome everybody to the April 21st meeting of the Public Works and Sustainability Committing. We do have a full quorum of committee members here today, so we'll go ahead and get started. We have a brief agenda. The first order of business is approval of the minutes from the March 3rd, 2025 Public Works and Sustainability Committee. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. The second update, our friends from the Tree Advisory and Education Board are here to give us an update on what they've been working on over the past year and the things they're hoping to accomplish in 2025. So with that, I'll turn it over to Linda Grantstaff.
Is that on?
Yep.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay. I'm Linda Grantstaff, and with me is Mary Kennedy, and we are both members of the Tree Advisory and Education Board. We're going to be joined by Allison Welsh, who is our newest member of the board. And so I'd like to just move to the agenda. We'll tell you what we're going to cover. Do we have to do that?
Do we have to?
It's up to you. Okay, we can just page forward. Okay, yeah, because you can open the link. Okay, so we'll cover the current board and the mission. We'll talk about what we did in 2024. We'll talk about some of our objectives for 2025, and some recommendations that we'd like the Public Works and Sustainability Committee and the city to consider going forward. So let's go to the next slide. So I have chaired the board since the board was formed in November of 2019. This is my second term, and it will end in December. And I've already warned the rest of the committee that I'm going to move on so that someone else can have this experience. Rita Stevens and Matt Bixenstein were not able to join us today. Allison just joined at the end of last year and will be joining us, I believe, also. So we're charged with collaborating with the city on the tree policies and practices, promoting the city's tree programs, and educating residents regarding responsible tree stewardship and the benefits of trees on private property. And that's an important part of our mission because our goal is to increase the tree canopy to 33.5% by 2035. And there's no way that that can happen unless we get private citizens to plant trees on their property. And having planted 15 trees on my piece of property, I know that that takes some effort, but it's really worth it in the long run. So in 2024, we launched this community canopy tree giveaway program. I'm going to turn it over to Mary to talk more about this, but it was a pilot last year. We ran two tree giveaways, one in the spring, one in the fall, and it was very, very successful. And Mary, you want to tell more about it?
Yeah. So the tree giveaway program is in partnership with the National RBJ Foundation. They do an urban tree canopy program where you engage residents. And this program was primarily funded by the city through the Gift to Tree program. We had some funds there. And it also, we set up at, what's the name of the?
Bernice Pike Park.
Thank you, Bernice Pike Park. I apologize. So we set up at Bernice Pike Park for both giveaways in there. We included tree planting demonstrations by one of our members. We also had other education and information things set up. And we also engaged quite a few volunteers, Lakewood Garden Club. We had H2O volunteers present. We used the National Arbor Day Foundation's tools, as well as the city of Lakewood, to help us get the word out and engage the citizens around choosing their trees and being there for the event. With the 100 Tree Giveaway, both in spring and fall, the trees sold out in hours. So it became quite a competitive thing, which was pretty awesome, right? Our hope, and this we're going to talk about a little bit more, but we hope to survey the participants of that tree giveaway in the upcoming months, hopefully very, very soon, May of 2025 is our goal, on things like survival, if there's any issues associated with the trees, any other feedback that might help us to make this program more successful. Because like Rita said, we're going to have a real hard time reaching that 33.5% goal without private residents planting trees. I made this map using ArcGIS. We'll see if I can, can I do have anything? Oh, there it is, my cursor. Sorry, guys. So if, and I can go ahead and open this, yes. Yeah. If you guys look, this is a map. This is all the trees. And I went ahead and separated it by Ward. I'm just going to use the classic viewer, nice and simple. So I can go here in my details section. And if you look, this is the spring giveaway here. And you can, you guys can see, I'm sure, that the trees, you know, we saw people picking up trees all over Lakewood and planting trees all over. But we noticed that in spring, and I'm going to click here, as well as in the fall, that Ward 4 was less represented and less, as a consequence, has, is going to have a less densely, or dense tree canopy, you know, as these trees grow from this program. So we are definitely thinking about ways that we can engage Ward 4 residents more and property owners more so that we can increase participation in that particular part of Lakewood. So, and if you want to see that, hopefully that'll be up on the city site, yes. So, like I said, we really recognize that we want those trees to be equally distributed. And Ward 4 already is more depleted in canopy, so it needs some extra attention.
So the other things we did in 2024 was we had our third year of the Most Distinguished Tree Contest in conjunction with the Lakewood Observer. So residents can nominate a tree or multiple trees that they think are cool. And there were a few different categories, like the most distinguished tree, but the oddest tree, or the best conifer, and so forth. So we give nominal prizes away, and people can vote on the most distinguished trees. And so that's just, is another type of educational outreach. We also have advocated for additional resources for the forestry team. In particular, we felt that it was important to provide watering for newly planted trees, in particular, the spring-planted trees. We'd had a very hot summer, and we're concerned about the survival rate. So we've been able successfully to get resources for seasonal help and a watering truck. And it takes about a week to go through and water all of those new trees every, all through the summer. But we think that'll pay off in the long run. We've also worked with the forestry team on tree species, moving away from certain invasive species and increasing the number of native species. Tree protection for any kind of construction sites, so in the parks in particular, trying to make sure that there's less damage to well-established trees because of trucks running over the ground around the trees, et cetera. Deer protection for newly planted trees as well. We, I'm having trouble seeing that one, so I'm going to look over here. We've also put together some recommendations for sidewalk root management, and we're going to continue to work on that because we think that there's a lot of damage that occurs when there are construction, you know, I walk the Glenbury corridor on my dog walks, and there was a waterline work, and the trees that were not taken down had their roots cut almost to the tree trunk. So we expect there's going to be some more loss there. The, we've worked on different kinds of outreach. We participated in the community festival, and that is at Madison Park. And we use that as another way of really encouraging folks in Ward 4 to consider planting trees. We also attended the Cuyahoga County Tree Summit, which was a great opportunity for us to meet with our peers in other kind of shade tree commissions, et cetera, and members of forestry teams across the county, and to hear what people are doing. So that's something that we encourage the forestry team to also participate in. We asked for and initiated increased funding for the tree giveaway this year. So we're moving from 100 trees in the spring to 200 trees in both the spring and the fall. So we'll be matching the number of trees that the city is planting on tree lawns and in parks throughout the city. So instead of 400 trees that the city is planting, we'll get 800 trees planted in 2025. And then as we get outreach from residents about tree-related concerns, we work with the forestry team to share that. And I know that you've probably been up and down bunts and seen all the signs. And I get emails from people who are concerned about the impact on the trees on bunts. But we understand, and we advocated for the least amount of tree removal as possible. So if we can move to 2025, 2025, we were successful in getting increased funding. We also have looked at increasing the number of native trees, including more small trees, that would be more suited to smaller properties, in particular, looking at the Ward 4 size dimensions, property dimensions. And so we have had very good uptake. The tree giveaway is this coming Saturday, and we had, I think, 191 of the trees signed up for. We have another promotional note going out on social media to try to make sure. And we swapped out some more small trees for some of the oaks so that we can really try to encourage those to be taken up as well. We were able to get a grant from Healthy Lakewood, and we were
I know that that takes some effort, but it's really worth it in the long run. So in 2024, we, I'm gonna, we launched this community canopy tree giveaway program. I'm going to turn it over to Mary to talk more about this, but it was a pilot last year. We ran two tree giveaways, one in the spring, one in the fall, and it was very, very successful. And Mary, you want to tell more about it?
Yeah, so the tree giveaway program is in partnership with the National RBJ Foundation. They do an urban tree canopy program where you engage residents. And this program was primarily funded by the city through the Gift a Tree program. We had some funds there. And it also, we set up at, what's the name of the?
Bernice Pike Park.
Thank you, Bernice Pike Park, I apologize. So we set up at Bernice Pike Park for both giveaways in there. We included tree planting demonstrations by one of our members. We also had other education and information things set up. And so, and we also engaged quite a few volunteers, Lakewood Garden Club. We had H2O volunteers present. We used the National Arbor Day Foundation's tools, as well as the City of Lakewood, to help us get the word out and engage the citizens around choosing their trees and being there for the event. With the 100 tree giveaway, both in spring and fall, the trees sold out in hours. So it was, it became quite a competitive thing, which was pretty awesome, right? Our hope, and this, we're going to talk about a little bit more, but we hope to survey the participants of that tree giveaway in the upcoming months, hopefully very, very soon, May of 2025 is our goal, on things like survival, if there's any issues associated with the trees, any other feedback that might help us to make this program more successful. Because like Rita said, we're going to have a real hard time reaching that 33.5% goal without private residents planting trees. I made this map using ArcGIS. We'll see if I can, can I, do I have anything? Oh, there it is, my cursor, sorry guys. So if, and I can go ahead and open this, yes, yeah. If you guys look, this is a map, this is all the trees, and I went ahead and separated it by Ward, I'm just going to use the classic viewer, it's nice and simple. So I can go here in my details section, and if you look, this is the spring giveaway here. And you can, you guys can see, I'm sure, that the trees, you know, we saw people picking up trees all over Lakewood and planting trees all over. But we noticed that in spring, and I'm going to click here, as well as in the fall, that Ward 4 was less represented and less, as a consequence, has, is going to have a less densely, or dense tree canopy, you know, as these trees grow from this program. So we are definitely thinking about ways that we can engage Ward 4 residents more and property owners more, so that we can increase participation in that particular part of Lakewood. So, and if you want to see that, hopefully that'll be up on the city site, yes. So, so like I said, we really recognize that we want those trees to be equally distributed. And Ward 4 already is more depleted in canopy, so it needs some extra attention.
So, the other things we did in 2024 was, we had our third year of the Most Distinguished Tree Contest in conjunction with the Lakewood Observer. So residents can nominate a tree or multiple trees that they think are cool, and there were a few different categories, like the most distinct, the most distinguished tree, but the oddest tree, or the best conifer, and so forth. So we give nominal prizes away, and people can vote on the most distinguished trees. And so that's just, is another type of educational outreach. We also have advocated for additional resources for the forestry team. In particular, we felt that it was important to provide watering for newly planted trees, in particular, the spring planted trees. We'd had a very hot summer and were concerned about the survival rate. So we've been able successfully to get resources for seasonal help and a watering truck, and it takes about a week to go through and water all of those new trees every, all through the summer. But we think that'll pay off in the long run. We've also worked with the forestry team on tree species, moving away from certain invasive species and increasing the number of native species. Tree protection for any kind of construction sites, so in the parks in particular, trying to make sure that there's less damage to well-established trees because of trucks running over the ground around the trees, et cetera. Deer protection for newly planted trees as well. We, I'm having trouble seeing that one, so I'm going to look over here. We've also put together some recommendations for sidewalk root management, and we're going to continue to work on that because we think that there's a lot of damage that occurs when there are construction, you know, I walk the Glenbury corridor on my dog walks, and there was a water line work, and the trees that were not taken down had their roots cut almost to the tree trunk. So we expect there's going to be some more loss there. The, we've worked on different kinds of outreach. We participated in the community festival, and that is at Madison Park, and we use that as another way of really encouraging folks in Ward 4 to consider planting trees. We also attended the Cuyahoga County Tree Summit, which was a great opportunity for us to meet with our peers in other kind of shade tree commissions, et cetera, and members of forestry teams across the county, and to hear what people are doing. So that's, that's something that we encourage the forestry team to also participate in. We asked for and initiated increased funding for the tree giveaway this year, so we're moving from 100 trees in the spring to 200 trees in both the spring and the fall. So we'll be matching the number of trees that the city is planting on tree lawns and in parks throughout the city. So instead of 400 trees that the city is planting, we'll get 800 trees planted in And then as we get outreach from residents about tree-related concerns, we work with the forestry team to share that. And I know that you've probably been up and down bunts and seen all the signs, and I get emails from people who are concerned about the bunts, the impact on the trees on bunts. But we understand and we advocated for the least amount of tree removal as possible. So if we can move to 2025, 2025, we were successful in getting increased funding. We also have looked at increasing the number of native trees, including more small trees that would be more suited to smaller properties, in particular, looking at the Ward 4 size, dimensions, property dimensions. And so we have had very good uptake. The tree giveaway is this coming Saturday, and we had, I think, 191 of the trees signed up for. We have another promotional note going out on social media to try to make sure, and we swapped out some more small trees for some of the oaks, so that we can really try to encourage those to be taken up as well. We were able to get a grant from Healthy Lakewood, and we were also able to get sponsorship from Neograph, which is, and they're going to do some volunteer, have some volunteers at the event on Saturday as well. And it's a lot of fun. If any of you want to come and just see what happens when people come for 200 trees, it's a lot of fun to see. We run tree planting demos and tree care discussions throughout the course of the three hours. It starts at 10:00, and it'll be back at Bernice Pike Park, and it'll run until 1:00. We are exploring some additional outreach and education concepts. We've lined up with the library to purchase some tree-related stories for the story walks at both Madison Park and Kaufman Park, and have obtained funding for that from the Lakewood Garden Club, so that's going to take place. We are exploring a community arboretum concept, initially focused on Lakewood Park. One of our members, Allison, has worked on a similar collaboration in the past. And we're talking with Garden Walk Lakewood, which does a free tree, a free garden walk in July, about incorporating some tree-related focus in that garden walk. And we continue to work with the forestry department on their efforts.
All right. And just to add to some of the possible ways that we can outreach, in addition to the things that Linda mentioned and are mentioned on the slide, we're also exploring things like partnerships and collaborations with Lakewood High School students and their horticulture or environmental science programs, looking into signage for some of our older trees in Lakewood, right, that are of some significance, where the Moses trees are slowly but surely, right, hitting the end of their life, and so we recognize.
There's only one left.
Yeah, there's, exactly. So there's only one in Lakewood, right? Yeah. And so it's time to give a nod to the next generation of our heritage trees, and hopefully, like I said, give Lakewood residents the opportunity to learn a little bit about these, about these tree species, and perhaps some other exceptional native tree species, or, you know, species in Madison Park, Lakewood Park, et cetera. So, all right.
One more?
Do we have one more? Oh, we do. Oh, our recommendations.
Our recommendations. So, so some of the things we want to think about and have talked as a board have been to explore the assessment of tree-related, deer-related impacts on public and private trees. We have all probably seen little herds of deer wandering through the community, and it's amazing to me how far east they are when they're out and about. But we're going to explore that through some discussion with some of our counterparts in other boards and commissions to see what they're doing. But we think that there's some significant cost to residents and to the, to the city through the damage that the deer are doing to, in particularly, newly planted trees. We'll continue to participate in the Cuyahoga County Tree Summit to share best practices. We want to really continue to promote tree protection as it relates to construction projects, because we've invested so much in some large canopy trees, and to lose them due to construction is, is pretty sad. So we want to try to come up with ways to kind of barricade them off from construction sites, et cetera. We did that in the work that was being done in Kaufman Park, and I think that helped. We lost some very large trees in Lakewood Park after the playground work took place. And it takes some time for that to show up. It took a few years, but we had to take down, I think, three recently in that playground area. We want to consider, and we'll be putting some ideas together about including some community tree education fund in the city budget to really help expand adult outreach as well as student outreach, to make sure that people really understand the value of trees in the community. And we want to make sure that we utilize mapping resources to focus new trees in areas of need. So, anything you want to?
Excellent. No, I think, Linda, you covered everything. Like I said, I think that it is an essential thing for the city to consider education and community education around trees as part, you know what I mean, part of the, of the funding needs. And so, I want to second Linda's bullet point there about, like I said, considering that as part of our, our budget.
So that's, that's our formally, our formal recommendations and presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, as would Mary.
Yeah, sure, thanks. First off, thanks so much for the update. I always enjoy seeing what our, you know, boards and commissions are working on throughout the year. They're such an asset to our community, they inform us, so it's so helpful, and we're very thankful for all the time and effort you put into the work you do, so thank you. I'll turn it over to my colleagues on the committee in a moment. I just want to say, I really, I'm really interested in the kind of the educational opportunities around this, and just the awareness of, you know, just for, as a hobby, for the, you know, importance to, you know, the environment and the economy, what trees do for us. So these are all really great things that I hope we can work with you to spread the message on, so thank you. Are there any other folks, we'll start with the committee, that have questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, and I know Allison isn't here, so I may just reach out with her directly, but I was just curious about the community arboretarium, sorry, I can't, stumbling over my words, but I was just curious about that, and if you know anything about the rep, we should just, if I should just follow up directly with her.
Well, there are certain requirements for an arboretum to be certified, and she's exploring some of those. There's, I think she's with Kindle at Oberlin, and I believe that is, she's been working with them on their arboretum certification. But I, I think that we started with Lakewood Park because we have a pretty decent array of trees. There's a lot of them have signage already. We think that it, we, probably as a, the forestry department and as a tree city, we do a lot of the things that are necessary to be a qualified arboretum, but we'll need to really explore, flesh that out and, and share that back with the council once we have more details.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you. I think, I'm just curious about that, it sounds something that would, that fits with our Lakewood community and culture, like perfectly, so it wouldn't be anything extra we'd be doing, it wouldn't probably take additional funds or anything like that, it's just something that would be a nice fit.
We thought it would be a good resource to focus on, for example, occasional tree walks, where people could be walked through the park discussing, you know, specific trees and at their maturity, because most of them are pretty mature, although there are a lot of newly planted trees at the park as well. But I think that would be a kind of a easy way to engage residents in looking at trees and understanding the value of trees.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of programming that could happen in community-based outreach and efforts and things like that.
To kind of piggyback on that, so NPS has these kind of self-guided pamphlet-based tours that they use to engage the public around CVNP, right? And I, and when you said that, Linda, that was what, what was called to mind almost immediately was, oh, this is something perhaps the Tree Advisory and Education Board can develop for, you know, residents of Lakewood and visitors of Lakewood to enjoy our, hopefully, increasing, right, tree canopy.
Definitely, great. And then the other sort of is maybe more a comment, and maybe this is less something for the work of the Tree Advisory Committee, and maybe something that, more for the administration and, and/or council to work on. But what about engagement of landlords and working with, you know, properties that are rental properties, that the landlords might not live there, and they're, so how, how is that, and how has that been?
Well, we actually just had that discussion at our tree board last month, because a lot of, I believe, a lot of the Ward 4 has rental properties, I mean, all parts of Lakewood do, but, but in particular, we talked about perhaps coming up with ways to provide an incentive to those property landlords to participate by, in tree plantings. And there's a rental fee or a fee that they pay to be a landlord in Lakewood, and perhaps a discount on that if they plant trees on their property and maintain them, would be something that could be considered.
Yeah, that would, yeah, I think that's something that, is, yeah, I think, I think we can make some headway with that as well, on that front, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Bullock, do you have any comments?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and agree with Councilwoman Steiner's line of questions, it's great. So Linda, thank you for your long leadership. Mary, thanks for being here and for your excellence in community engagement. A bunch of questions, but a couple of comments. First, I think mapping is a great idea, should be easy enough to do, given the fact that technology is what it is today. I guess maybe easy isn't quite the right term, but it's, it's doable and achievable and a very helpful tool. I like the idea of a tree education fund in the, in the city budget, you know, I mean, challenge to my council colleagues, how many times do we ask the Healthy Lakewood Foundation or other sources of fund? I mean, we've got some resources, and the proposals usually are to allocate some resources, doesn't have to break the bank, we're not talking about, you know, unattainable amounts, but, but to me, that's very sound and would invest in consistency. And as we've said, Councilwoman Marks recalls, you know, Bob quiz, how, when you cut down an 80-year-old oak tree, how long does it take to grow an 80-year-old oak tree back? And, you know, we get elected at four-year terms, not 80-year terms. So having success on urban canopy, urban forest canopy is something that requires a lot of steadiness. So thanks for your, you know, energies, and then to Councilwoman Steiner's point, I think, to the degree that we raise engagement, understanding, education, that's going to help us be more successful across the board. You're, I think, smartly or intelligently focusing on trying to get private side of the property tree plantings, because that's where most of the square footage of town is, and that's essential. But it could also do things like, maybe, I see you're advising on construction project best practices. I'd like to ask how we're doing in your assessment on that front, because when I first served on council years ago, I remember talking to French Avenue, Virginia Avenue residents, saying, well, jeez, they're going to do a pipe project, cut a trench, cut every root in every, in the trench, and then by definition, those trees are no longer viable, they'll have to come down. And I said, well, jeez, can't there be some other way? And I was told, no. Then, in about five or six years, we had a different, you know, arborist leader, and he said, well, actually, you can, you can use an air gun drill to excavate at least under some tree roots, and then you just thread the pipes underneath. So I'm curious as to whether we're still doing that practice, or, you said, Linda, on your walk in Granger, we're cutting every tree.
Well, at least on Glenbury.
Glenbury.
I, I saw clear cuts right up to the trunk, between the sidewalk or the curb and the trunk.
So is that, that was every tree?
Those, pardon?
Every tree, or every second tree?
Well, I think about 25 trees were taken down because they were in the way, and were deemed to be, you know, at significant risk of failure. And some of them were, you know, old sycamores that were having some decline anyway. But a number of newer, newly planted, newer planted trees were able to be saved, but, and those probably came through okay, but there were some kind of mid-range, mid-aged, not really old trees, but pretty good caliper trunks, where it was clear cut right up to the, the trunk. And so I've cautioned our forestry team, they are going to keep an eye on those, because it, it looks like those will have a pretty high failure rate.
So my question would be, for all of us, is, are the right people talking to the frontline project excavators or not? Because many of those crews are going to be contractors.
Right.
Retained and directed by the city, but things happen. As anybody who's ever redone a kitchen knows, you have to be present and pay attention to the details.
And I, I can't answer, but I do know that generally, the forestry team isn't engaged real early on in those projects, but does, did go out and mark trees that they thought should come down for that project, and then which trees they thought could survive. But again, I don't know that they really engaged over the construction methodology, but I, I can guarantee they didn't weave the pipes through tree trunks.
Good feedback, thank you. The reason I'm getting into this is, if the Tree Education Advisory Board is focused on the private side of the property line, and we're making slow, steady progress there, but then we're taking steps backwards on the public side of the property line, I know that the city is doing good things to plant new trees, but if, if we're not having that mix.
Oh yeah, you have to have mixed age, I'm sorry.
If we're not, if we're not getting that balance correct, then we're, we're going to kind of be treading in place. And so, so I'm really thankful and glad to get the update. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, for scheduling this. Do you think your recommendations are being followed, and, and, you know, who's your counterpart that you get to work with on a month-to-month basis?
The sidewalk recommendations that we made, the around sidewalk replacement, because sidewalk replacement happens throughout the city all the time. And so we put together kind of a fairly, a one-page set of standards for trying to save as much of the root structure of those trees as possible. And I believe that that has been shared, that, I know that that has been shared with the Public Works Team, and I believe is shared with the contractors. I'm not sure that contractors always follow those rules.
Okay. That's a helpful piece of feedback, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Anybody else, council members who'd like to speak? Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you, ladies. I really enjoyed this presentation, and I'm happy to say I'm picking up a tree on Saturday for my yard in Ward 4. I remember when the Tree Task Course was originally formed several years ago, I believe they, I believe they had some printed information that we could hand out to residents. Do you still have that?
We do, and we have a number of pieces on the website, that, on the, both the forestry department website and the Tree Advisory page on the website, the city's website. But when we are distributing trees at the tree giveaway, that's one of the pieces we give, is a handout on tree care, and so, and we try to make sure that all of those folks picking up trees participate in the tree planting demo, where we also talk about tree care on an ongoing basis.
Because over the years, I've, I've spoken to many residents about planting trees in their tree lawn and in their yards, but many people are not savvy about going into the website or finding things on the city's website. So I would like to see you have some type of a brochure that you could have printed up, that we could give out at all the community activities that we have around town, because I think once people have to go into a website to try to find something, and we have to admit that the city's website is not real user-friendly, especially for people who don't, aren't real.
Savvy, yeah.
Yeah, and so I know there are several of my neighbors that I've talked to, and I've told them to go to the website and find things, but, you know, they still don't have trees, so.
Well, that would be a potential use of an education fund, would be to have those types of tools printed out and available, and they don't change dramatically from year to year. So, I mean, we could have kind of a, a resource available for everybody.
Right, but I think that would be very helpful, would be very helpful for me as I'm talking to my neighborhood, so, I appreciate what you do, thank you very much. I'm talking to my neighborhood, so, I appreciate what you do, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Council President Kepel?
Hi, thanks for being here and for all of the work you do. I miss being the council liaison on the Tree Advisory Board, it was a really, really great group. I'm always telling everybody what a great group it is, and it's evident by all the work that you guys have done. So, I, a couple of things I wanted to ask about, well, first of all, following up on Councilwoman Marks's comment about the printed materials, that, that may be something that is just a matter of asking your administrative liaison or your council liaison to, to do, because we do have an in-house print shop too, so we can...
Good.
To a certain extent, you know, do some of that, but obviously, the education fund as well. And then, following up on the, I wanted to ask about the eight native tree species.
Yes.
And I don't want to do a pop quiz here, but do you happen to know what those species are?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the smaller trees include a pagoda dogwood, a red bug, a hornbeam, and, and one more. The mid-sized trees include an Ohio buckeye and a black gum or black tupelo. And the large trees are a chinkapin oak and river birch. And I forget what the fourth small tree, service berry.
Service berry.
Service berry, thank you.
And, so those are the ones that you recommend for both public plantings and private plantings?
Oh, there's a much longer list for the public plantings.
Okay.
And if, and if folks want to have a tree planted by the same contractor that plants all the city trees, that's green leaf, they can contract at a, at the same price that the city gets to have those trees planted in their, on their own property. And those are larger caliber trees than the ones that we'll be giving away. The ones we're giving away are in three-to-five gallon pots and are about four to six feet high, and the city trees are, are larger.
And I, and I apologize, I know you said that, I recall how quickly it sold out last year. I did see on the website, or on the city's social media this year, that they were like, oh, we still have a few trees available, but those are gone now, or?
We have nine left.
Nine left, okay.
And we were able to swap out the chinkapin oaks. When you go into the, the tool, the date, the, the system to order your trees, it cautions you, if you're going after a big, one of the large trees, to make sure it's 50 feet away from any power lines and, you know, so it probably turned people off on a big tree.
Sure.
For sure, if they are on a small piece of property. But, so we were able to swap it out with the black tupelo, which is frankly, not that much smaller, but it is a smaller, it's a mid-sized tree.
Sure. Okay, thanks. As I, and so I know, so, the question about the buckeyes sort of answered my question, but the very, the big, long list for public plantings, those are all native trees?
No.
No, they're not all native trees.
It's a mixture.
Okay.
It's a mixture of both native and non-native, and it's really focused on trees that will sustain the kinds of rigors of being on a tree lawn in particular, with all the salt and the traffic and so forth. So, for example, ginkgos are not a native tree. The red horse chestnuts, which is a cousin of the Ohio buckeye, but it's not a native tree. So there's a variety of, of trees that are on the list, because they are street hearty trees.
I see. And then, oh, go ahead, Mary.
Well, I was gonna say, it's important to note that the Tree Board has been kind of constantly monitoring that list, and so there are some trees that are non-native that used to be on that list, that we have since cautioned, you know, you, you need to remove these because they can be an invasive species issue, so, yeah. So the trees that are not native on that list are trees that we are comfortable with, because we've, we've done some research and we're confident that they're not gonna spread all over the place.
Got it, okay, that, that answers part of the question. I just got a, a call from a resident just yesterday about a tree on their tree lawn and dropping different things, so I'll have to follow up with them, but I just was on mine. And then if, if, okay, with Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask too about, you mentioned about the Community Education Fund, are there any recommendations? Or the Community Tree Education Fund, so you're talking about community education or your, or community trees, as, in the sense that a large tree that's on private property provides, affects the whole community even though it's on private property? No, you're talking about specifically education?
We're really talking about educating residents on the value of trees, both ecologically and financially and, in all ways. There are a lot of people who don't want trees planted on their tree lawns, because they don't want to have to worry about leaves, or they don't, they're concerned about sewers and whether the tree roots will get into their sewers, things like that. So you hear a variety of responses, but we're able to work through many of those by, by talking through the issues with the residents. But there are some residents that just flat-out refuse to have them on their tree lawns, and you'd rather not plant there, because they won't survive.
Yeah, we've heard from a few of those. And then just, my final thought is, one of the things, so we had our council retreat earlier, last month, and a number of council members identified working on large tree preservation legislation as, as a priority, as well as budgeting, so I'm sure Councilwoman Evans will be following up with, with you guys about that, if you haven't already started talking about it, but that is a shared priority of council that I, or I shouldn't say is shared, I shouldn't assume shared, but I hope is shared with the Tree Advisory Board, but I'm, will be following up with that, so...
Any other comments? Councilperson Strebig?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for all the work that you do on this advisory board. And I may have missed this number, or maybe my math is just not quite ready to go today, but could you tell me total number of trees again this year to be planted between the city and the advisory giveaways, and what kind of numbers are we looking at?
So, the tree, the city will be planting 400 trees, 200 in the spring and 200 in the fall, on tree lawns in some of the parks and green spaces, and that, and so that's the public planting. That number does not include trees that are going to be planted as a result of construction projects. So, for example, on Glenbury, they took 25 trees down, they replanted all of those. So, so there is more than 400 trees being planted by the city through different projects, but I don't have the other number. And we are going to be, through this private property tree canopy, also giving away and planting 400 trees. So 800 trees plus the, the trees that are being planted as a result of waterline work and so, so forth.
Very good, thank you. That was the number I was, thought I was doing quick math, and I, but I wanted to make sure I heard that from you right. So 800 trees plus those that are removed from projects this year, that's fantastic. I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that. And the other idea or, or piece I wanted to mention was, when it comes to like the landlord education and really all property owners, if, if we could start the conversation with how to talk about property lines and utility lines, and when it's okay to take that tree down. I have, I have two rental properties here in Lakewood, and in, in both locations, I have trees growing in my neighbor's yard that are, that are like really on top of the garages in both locations, and even the new owner that I talked to at one point, he's like, I didn't even know that was my tree. You know, so there's, there's gotta be some kind of a conversation starter somewhere to, to educate people about that.
One of the, the most asked questions when we were at the Community Festival at Madison Park was, what can I do about my neighbor's tree?
Yeah.
That I think is threatening my property?
Yeah.
And that's a very tough discussion to have, but there are steps that people can take. But it starts with having a conversation with your neighbor about, this is your tree and it's over my yard and I'm concerned about all this rot, so forth. But, the, the, the residents are frequently looking for the city to have somebody from the forestry department come out and say, you know, this tree is unsafe and you need to take it down. And the forestry department doesn't have the resources to do that, to, to any great extent. But, so, you know, we recommend that they contact an arborist and get a letter from an arborist that says, you know, you have an issue with a tree. Those kinds of things are, are the challenges that take place all the time.
Asking people to have adult conversations, right? I understand, and that, I also heard from neighbors recently on Manor Park and Chase with, with the last windstorms, and we haven't really even had big ones yet, right? And, and a number of those neighbors losing their, their power due to downed trees and tree limbs in that neighborhood.
We did that, we had that on our neighborhood, and it's all the trees right along the fence line.
Yeah.
In between properties that back up to each other.
Yeah.
And nobody knows whose tree is what, and it, and the power lines are right overhead.
I'd love to see something from your, from your advisory committee talk exactly about, okay, step one, try and identify, you know, and, and go through a systematic, you know, when do you contact the city? When do you really need to contact First Energy and, and try and sort through those issues? But thank you very much, I appreciate all your information.
Great, thanks, everybody. I do want to make one note for the record, there was one public comment received in regards to the Bunce Road tree canopy, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that comment. If there are no other questions or comments, thanks so much again. Oh, sorry, one person in the audience. Coming up, make sure if there's a button there, press that so the light turns green, state your name and address if you're comfortable.
Yes, hi. Kim McDonald, a Bunce Road resident, I'm at 1460, and, you know, we're all very concerned about losing our trees, and I've been working hard to find out exactly how many trees that is, and my latest request from Wednesday has not been answered, like, how many is it? Because we know that all the trees on the west side of the road, possibly with the exception of one, will be cut down because they're in the way of the path, but also from Detroit to Lakewood Heights Boulevard, almost, up until where the median is, the road, the road is being narrowed north of Detroit, so I'm assuming, and I haven't not had this verified yet, but I'm assuming the trees north of Detroit to Clifton on the east side more than likely stand a good chance of being saved, because they're not going to be close to the roadway. Maybe I should be talking to you. And, and the ones right up near Lakewood Heights Boulevard that are, there's a median that will be removed and the road will be narrowed there, I'm thinking possibly the ones right there could be saved on the east side. But, the trees from that point north to Detroit Road, once they move the road, they're cutting three and a half feet into the, the right-of-way or the tree lawn on the east side of the road, which will not leave enough space, according to the ODOT recommendations rules, I don't know, there must be 18 inches between the curb and a tree, say. So there is not, there is not that space, at least in the places that I've measured. And, so I really would like to know how many trees is that, that we're gonna lose, because it's basically Detroit to Lakewood Heights, both sides of the street. And, okay, with the exception, I don't want to like totally skew this, but with the exception of where there might be a curb bump out, possibly the tree that's by the bump out could be saved, is what I understand. It's a lot of trees, both sides.
Great, thank you for your comment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do, do we have that answer, or can we get it? And, and I, you know, I don't see the Public Works folks here, but Mayor, maybe through your office, we could...
Yeah, we, we received the email, I think, on Thursday, and City Hall was closed on Friday, so Public Works right now is going through, we have to go up and actually count it physically, we just don't maintain a count, so they're working on getting that over to you. And I will say, I, I did review the plans a while back, and as, as we always do, we try our best to preserve as many trees as possible. My last glance on the east side was there, in my opinion, there was a considerable amount that we could save, but that's always part of our plans, is to maintain as many trees as possible, and the ones that do have to go, they're replanted at the end of the project.
Great, thank you, Mayor. If there are any other further comments, thank you once again for, to the Tree Advisory Board for being here and for everything you do, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you?
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 Near Fort Lauderdale, I guess.
Not bad.
Good, how are you?
Maureen, how are you? Good. I got an email back from Trevor today about, what's that?
I said, thank you, yes, about adjustments.
He gave us so much, he's basically referencing a lot of the stuff that was already in the presentation, just so you know. But I'm looking forward to it.
All right, well, call to order the April 21st first meeting of council. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Legions. Now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Baker, absent. Bullock?
Here.
Evans?
Kepel?
Here.
Marks?
Steiner?
Here.
Strebig?
Here.
Move to excuse the absence of Councilman Baker?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held April 7th, 2025.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item one, report from Public Works and Sustainability Committee regarding meeting held today, April 21st, 2025.
Councilmember Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Today, we heard from the Lakewood Tree Advisory and Education Board, who updated us on their projects completed during 2024 and also their plans for 2025 moving forward. So I just want to thank them for their work. And it's always great to hear from our boards and commissions. So I'll move to receive and file this communication.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I'll just echo my thanks to the Tree Education Advisory Board. Always interesting to hear what they're doing and doing a lot of great work for the community. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item two, substitute ordinance 14, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing and directing the Director of Planning and Development or the mayor to enter into an agreement with a licensed real estate broker to market for sale various real properties pursuant to Section 15507 of the codified ordinances.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item three, ordinance 13, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item four, ordinance 15, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately amending Sections 90212, homestead exemption, and 91503, homestead exemption water, to increase the income threshold to adjusted gross income of $40,000 annually.
A move to defer?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and this is, has already been referred to Finance Committee. So we look forward to hearing that discussion about hopefully making more of our residents able to take advantage of that break. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Bullock?
We've got a hearing scheduled on, for the Finance Committee on May 5 at 6 o'clock.
Awesome.
We're on our way towards, you know, to deliberate on that.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item five, communication from President Kepel regarding partnership with Legal Aid Society of Cleveland.
Dear members of council, the Legal Aid Society of Cleveland, also known as Legal Aid, has long partnered with the City of Lakewood to assist residents with a variety of concerns. In 2024, Legal Aid was able to substantially increase its presence in the community through the help of grant dollars, including American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded by the city. Attached to you will find additional details regarding the recent impact of Legal Aid in the City of Lakewood. Building on this success, Legal Aid is poised to continue its strong presence in Lakewood in 2025 with additional outreach and education that could potentially interact synergistically with council members' outreach goals for their wards. As a starting point for collaboration, I have invited Legal Aid to deliver a presentation at our April 28 Committee of the Whole meeting that covers the basic services provided by Legal Aid and the work that they do to assist low-income residents who face legal issues that threaten their homes, health, safety, and livelihoods. I'll move to refer this communication to Committee of the Whole for further discussion. Motion's been made and seconded, and you'll see attached to this communication is a letter from our partners at Legal Aid outlining some of the things we've done in the past and some of the services, but we'll be hearing more from them about that. All right, so motion in a second to refer to Committee of the Whole. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Bullock?
I think it'll be very helpful to get that briefing.
Great. Thank you. Yep, we did a lot of great, that was part of our, when we did our ARPA funds that we allocated to do some of those community presentations, and they were certainly well-attended. And we're looking to expand that out into all four words this time. All right, on the motion to refer to Committee of the Whole, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item six, Resolution 202518, a resolution to designate April 21st through April 27th, 2025, as Lesbian Visibility Week in the City of Lakewood and to highlight the achievements of longtime trailblazer and proud lesbian Nikki J. Antonio during this week.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And to kick off our discussion, I'll head over to Councilmember Strebig.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, Lesbian Visibility Week was founded in 2020 by magazine publisher Linda Riley of the United Kingdom. This international celebration of LGBTQIA women and non-binary people celebrates the power of sisterhood around the world. This opportunity to recognize and lift women and non-binary people for their bravery, sacrifice, and efforts to share their gifts with humanity, even at the great risk of bullying, harassment, and abuse, cannot be missed. Lesbians have contributed and continue to contribute to many fields, including arts, science, entertainment, sports, and politics. We often attribute the moniker of the first LGBTQ elected official to Harvey Milk with his 1977 election to the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. However, there were two elected lesbians before him. In 1974, out lesbian Kathy Kostachenko was elected to the Ann Arbor City Council at age 21, another feat in and of itself. Less than a year later, out lesbian Elaine Noble was elected to the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Our own neighbor and out lesbian Nikki J. Antonio ran for and was elected to this city council in 2005 after attending a meeting and hearing a lack of priority for a skate park in this city. Some of you remember that. Her achievements on this council and later in the State House as a representative and now senator are described in this resolution, and I hope that you will all join President Kepel, Councilman Baker, and myself in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council colleagues? We, well, just as a note, Senator and state minority leader Antonio is out of town this week. So we'll be officially celebrating her and presenting her with a resolution during, in June for Pride Week, Pride Month. So we'll get to celebrate her twice, which is certainly worthy of doing, so, for that resolution. And I'll just add myself that this resolution, proud to support it, and thank you, Councilwoman Strebig, for bringing it to our attention. Lesbian Visibility Week, now more than ever, it's important that we acknowledge those who are brave enough to be visible at a time when it is particularly frightening sometimes to be visible. So, and it is really important for our community, particularly our young people, to see, as you always say, if you can see her, you can be her. So certainly very important and proud to support this. And Senator Antonio has certainly been a mentor to me as well. Other council colleagues? All right, I don't think we have any members of the public signed in to speak, but I see some folks who may or may not want to. I'm just looking over that way. Anyone know? If you would, no pressure. You'll have another opportunity in June if you decide you want to later. All right. So no further discussion from council? One who wants to speak? All right, so we have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item seven, communication from Mayor George, President Kepel, and Vice President Baker regarding revised complete streets ordinance.
Mayor George, you want me to take up? Okay. All right. Dear colleagues, in an April 7th, 2025 communication to the City Council docket, council leadership notified the public of an upcoming new joint complete streets ordinance that council leadership and the administration have worked on over the past year. These efforts seek to build upon council's earlier proposed legislation, Ordinance 11, 2024, codifying complete streets, and the administration's proposed Resolution 2024-42 regarding a complete streets policy, and are a result of many meetings, public input, and research into what other peer communities are doing to implement safer street design. We seek to further our efforts for safe streets after the formal adoption of the Active Transportation Plan and Accompanying Safe Streets for All Plan on April 15th, 2024, collectively the Active Transportation Plan. The Active Transportation Plan specifically called for complete streets. Smart Growth America defines complete streets as "an approach to planning, designing, building, operating, and maintaining streets that enable safe access for all people who need to use them, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities." Over the past year, the administration and city council have been working diligently on the right complete streets ordinance for Lakewood. To culminate that work, we are jointly introducing a new complete streets ordinance that follows this communication. We bring forward this new joint ordinance to enact Section 901.23, Complete Streets of the Lakewood Codified Ordinances, to address the livability and safety needs of Lakewood by building upon efforts to promote an equitable, multimodal transportation system. This new joint complete streets ordinance sets up an accountability structure to ensure that the city is meeting the laudable goals outlined in the Active Transportation Plan. We welcome additional input from our colleagues and the public as we seek to implement the laudable goals of the Active Transportation Plan. Moreover, as we have discussed many times, the city and our school district are unique in that we do not provide school buses to bring students to school because we have neighborhood schools where most elementary and middle school students live within walking and/or biking distance to their respective school. It has proudly been called a walking school district. The Active Transportation Plan provided data that the key issues impacting caregiver decisions to let a child walk or bike to school, including safety, included safety of intersections and crossings at 61%, speed of traffic along route at 45%, and convenience of driving at only 13%. As such, the convenience of driving is not driving these decisions. Safety is. Moreover, 67% of fatal or serious injury pedestrian crashes and 40% of fatal or serious injury bicycle crashes happened within one-quarter miles of schools, and over 83% and 90% occurred within a half mile of schools. We owe it to the most vulnerable among us to do all we can to implement the safety infrastructure improvements outlined in the Active Transportation Plan. The new joint complete streets ordinance speaks for itself, but it breaks all transportation projects into Tier One transportation projects and Tier Two transportation projects. Tier One transportation projects are the major routes and intersections called out for specific complete streets elements in the Active Transportation Plan and will require submissions to Planning Commission and public input before implementation. Tier Two transportation projects will be all other transportation projects and won't specifically require a public meeting before Planning Commission, but nonetheless seek to have the city include complete streets elements in the design of those transportation projects. We ask that this communication and the accompanying new joint complete streets ordinance be referred to the appropriate committee and that a joint meeting with that committee and Planning Commission be held to fully explore the ordinance and provide a forum for public input. We welcome everyone's input on this new ordinance as we seek to make our public right-of-way safer for users of all ages and abilities. I'm going to move to refer this communication to Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and that was a lot from me, so I'll open up for any discussion on anything you just heard.
Madam President?
Councilman Bullock?
Thank you for this thoughtful letter and proposed process from a number of council members and from Mayor George as well. Mayor, thanks for joining in on this proposal as well. I'm, you know, going to read it carefully and understand the different moving parts and would love to, you know, understand how we got here, whether this is as strong as we want it to be, et cetera. But I think it's important, and I do know that City of Cleveland, for some years, I think more than 10 years, has had its own complete streets policy. And so I think it's good that we're considering that as well. I noticed there's a fair number of comments on this as well, so thank you.
Other council members? Yeah, and we did have, as part of this process, you know, one of the things that has gone on is, as we've been thoughtful about it over the past years, we did have that joint meeting with Planning Commission and representatives from the City of Cleveland about their complete streets ordinance. So understanding that the City of Lakewood is significantly smaller with a different amount of resources and staffing, also trying to, you know, design ours appropriately. All right, so we do have a number of comments about mostly supporting complete streets and one opposing really the Bunce Road plan, I think, or up to, about, but specifically about Bunce Road more than complete streets, I believe. And those will be included in the minutes. All right, I don't think we have anyone signed in to speak. Oh, we do. Emily, did you want to speak on the communi, where are you? Oh, thank you. Did you want to speak on the communication or the ordinance, which is, okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second to refer the communication to Planning Commission and Committee of the Whole. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item eight, ordinance 16, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately to enact Section 90123, Complete Streets of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lakewood, to address the livability and safety needs of Lakewood by building upon efforts to promote an equitable, multimodal transportation system.
Move to refer to Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? We had the whole communication setting this up, so not much left to say about that. But I will open up, Emily, if you want to come on up. So we have Emily Lindberg. Push the button till it turns green. There you go.
Hi. Hi. My name is Emily Lindberg. I live at 1651 Lauderdale Avenue. Thank you for letting me address the council. I just want to commend city council members for drafting the complete streets ordinance and specifically for recognizing that non-motorized transportation options are an important means of transportation with significant benefits for our environment and public health. I would like to add to this, though, that a network of complete streets that are both safe and convenient for active transportation users specifically will allow residents in Lakewood to be economically resilient in this moment when our nation's economy is really fraught with uncertainty. You know, we're at a point now where everything is expensive. Housing is expensive. Groceries are expensive. Everything's expenses. And having to deal with the expense of a car is just one more expense. And so I can speak to my own. And so I can speak to my own experience of being a one-car household that, you know, by being a one-car household for the last 20 years, it has saved our families significantly. And I would love for other families in our community to experience that as well. And having that freedom to move about without that, you know, that, that burden of so much expense is huge. And so I just want to acknowledge that. And at one point in the ordinance, it does mention that, you know, the safety of one mode will not be taken over the safety of another. And, you know, I totally, I totally agree with this, but I think it needs to be clarified that safety is not the same as convenience. And I do expect that convenience for some modes of transportation is going to go down with the, when the safety of other modes, specifically pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users increases. And that is okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, well, and then to the point of convenience too, as a matter of speed, which is safety really for everyone, so. Any further discussion? New ordinance?
I thought I signed up for this.
I have you, I have you for Bunce Road. Did you want to do that? This is for complete streets?
16-2025, Ordinance 16-2025.
Yes. But, oh, I see, I see, I see. So you have the quotes underneath. I got it. Okay, yeah, you're welcome to come up now. Yeah, yeah, you're welcome to come up now. Sure.
My name is Matt Herberger, 111448 Bunce Road. I'm speaking regarding the Ordinance 16-2025. I quote, "The Active Transportation Plan specifically called for complete streets. Smart Growth America defines complete streets as an approach to planning, designing, building, operating, and maintaining streets that enables safe access for all people who need to use them, including pedestrians, pedestrians, bicycles, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities." I think people should note, pedestrians comes first, and it's not alphabetical. It's pedestrian. I'm not here as a motorist. I'm not here representing myself as a motorist. I don't think it's more convenient to drive a car than ride a bike. It's a false narrative. "The Active Transportation Plan provided data that the key issues impacting caregiver decisions to let a child walk or bike to school included safety of intersections and crossings at 61%, speed of traffic along route at 45%, and convenience of driving at only 13%." Again, I don't care about the convenience of driving. Safety of intersections and crossings, 61%. A multimodal path does not change intersections or crossings. It has no impact. So 61% of the concerns are not addressed by a multimodal path. Speed of traffic along route at 45%. Again, a multimodal path does not slow traffic down. Police do. Enforcing existing laws do, but not a multimodal path. Considering accommodations for users of all ages and abilities and being sensitive to the context of the project setting, complete streets are not a one-size-fits-all. Every project may look different. They're here, my concern is with this ordinance that you're passing now. I notice Section 3, it's declared to be an emergency, an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare. Okay, to declare this ordinance an emergency is an abuse of power. And it rings very much like what I see at the federal level, declaring emergency powers to pass something. This is not an emergency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. For clarification, we're not passing it, we're referring it to committee, so there's nothing being passed on tonight, so just for clarification on process. And that emergency language just means that it goes into effect when adopted rather than the standard procedure in an ordinance would go into effect within, I think, 60 days, 40, 40 days? 40 days from passage, so it would just be 40 days earlier, but nothing's getting passed tonight, so that is something that can also be discussed in committee. Okay, and then I do have, I see Kim McDonald, oh, thank you, Kim. I was, I saw the little quote marks and I saw the Bunce, so I thought you guys were wanting to speak at the end, but you're welcome to speak on this.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to stress about the streets, the safe streets and the communication in Tier One. The residents have complained, and I'm going to repeat the complaint, that, that until we received a letter which was dated April 24th, I believe, of 2024, about this meeting that was coming up on May 7th, where a bike lane was mentioned once on the back of the letter, which was two full pages of text, a bike lane was mentioned once, and we were totally taken by surprise about the fact that there might be a bike lane in this project. And then it was stated that there would be time for public comment. So from May 7th through June 9th, it was open for public comment. Later on, I found out that this actually was decided at a, I believe, Planning Commission meeting before the commenting period was over. So before June 9th, people were told that, that it had been decided that it was going to be this multimodal path, which just seems like kind of a backwards way to do it. If you're taking public comment, how can you, like, close the case prior? Also, people have complained that we, as the residents of the road, were never consulted first. Well, we feel that there was a plan in mind, the one that was adopted for this multimodal path, but we kind of feel like it had to be kept secret, otherwise we would have started our, our opposition way back when. So by the time that we realized that this was coming, you know, it, it was shocking and not the way that I believe a project should come about. And it was just stated in your communication that for Tier One projects, that you would be consulting or educating or whatever the public on it and asking for, I'm not quoting you, I'm sorry, feedback or whatever. So I'm just feeling that contrary to what has been said in this room by city official, that we were not consulted, that in our viewpoint, a plan was put forth without proper vetting by us, the residents. And, you know, you may have noticed our campaign, we're trying to get more of the public to see what's happening here because just the way things are in today's, you know, lives, people are busy and a lot of people that even live on Bunce had no clue what's happening. They don't get the mail, they don't read it. I don't know, we put out flyers, they don't read those. You know, it's just difficult. And so you may have noticed our sign campaign, and so we are drawing attention, people are saying what's going on. And we've got upwards of 500 people on a petition that's signed. In addition, we have many people that have signed a paper petition, and I can think of two families on Bunce that have said they really like this. Not that I've polled everyone, but I've spoken to countless people on Bunce Road, and two families have told me they like this plan. So that's so much for communication with residents before a project, and I would surely hope that you do a better job with all these projects that you're proposing in advance because I think you have really mismanaged this one.
Thank you. And I'll just, just to, I think a couple of things are getting conflated, so, and I appreciate your remarks, but, so the complete streets ordinance that we're considering tonight, or that we're, that is being referred to committee for further discussion, is talking about overall design of streets. So this is including things such as curb bumpouts, it's including raised crosswalks, it's including traffic signaling, it's including all sorts of big infrastructure design, whether or not, like as many folks, we've had this room full of people asking us for changes to Madison Hilliard and what should be considered there. This is those kinds of large-scale infrastructure, including, as you're talking about, Bunce's large-scale infrastructure, and saying that we're looking at a process to, thinking about all of those design aspects and takes into consideration that public comment. So just to be clear, this is talking about both public participation in that large-scale design project. So you're specifically talking about Bunce, this is talking about process of those large-scale active transportation and complete streets projects, which is multiple things, it's not specifically a multimodal path. So just wanting to be clear for anyone, because we're kind of getting two things a little bit, little bit, they're integrated but not the same, so, just for clarity. Okay, and then I see Bob Neff, Bob Neff, did you want to speak now on this?
I'll hold till the end of the line, so.
Two Bunce, okay. Yeah, and that's fine. And y'all are welcome to sign in again if you want to talk to us again at the end too, but just, just wanting to be clear about the things that we're doing because I know it can get a little process-y up here or so of how we're doing this. Okay, so I think that's everyone I have signed in to speak on complete streets. Like Councilman Bullock mentioned, we do have a number of e-commerce on complete streets itself, as well as specifically the Bunce Road project, and those will be included in the record. All right, any further discussion from council members?
Madam President.
Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the text. Do we have in this draft before us tonight a proposed case advisory board or not? I'm not sure I'm seeing it.
That is the next thing on the docket after this.
Okay.
So I think that'll also address some of the things that members of the public were just discussing.
Okay, thank you. So, secondly, I'll echo some of what you're saying to members of the public here, all that's very important, it all seems to be arising in our community all at once because we've had pedestrian and bike accidents, so we're concerned about safety enforcement in other areas. We're standing up a walk-to-school program and bike-to-school safely program. We're also have a proposal for a major avenue on Bunce, and all, all those things are coming together. In some ways, the proposal here is to have a coherent plan and framework to talk about all those various elements and be thoughtful about all of it, how we sequence them, how we decide them, what are the standards, including communication with the public, I, in my opinion anyway. The, and to me, if consensus develops to implement a complete streets policy, it really's going to kick in and take effect three to five years in the future and beyond, maybe a little bit earlier than that, but some of the projects that are in front of us right now, we're using the current rules to work through what, I think, the proposal here, maybe I'm not describing things perfectly, but the, my colleagues who are putting this together are thinking ahead and trying to design a thoughtful system so that as we do this, and we're always going to be improving Lakewood roads and sidewalks and everything else, we have a stronger and stronger system five, 10, 20 years out. That's my understanding of it. And how we do that matters very much. I guess I, since we have talked about the Bunce Road project, I would like to suggest that more communication could be helpful. The, the residents have been attending for a number of council meetings now, you know, is, is the administration, the mayor's office maybe is the most appropriate location receptive to some one-on-one or small group format where some of these questions could be posed and answered outside the time constraints of, in the formality of a, of a city meeting like this. To me, that would be helpful so that we can get clarity and also some of the requests the residents are coming forward with for different features of the project could at least be informally discussed. I would be happy to participate in such a meeting. I don't know if the administration's receptive to that, but to me, that would be a constructive step.
So, any, any, first of all, thank you, council. Any public records requests and/or emails that have come into, to our department, whether it's Public Works for Engineering regarding the Bunce Road projects, including those that are here tonight, we have been responsive to all of them. Also, the plans, Stage Two was, was just submitted, so the plan is, is set at this time. Again, during the process, we did take public input and we did make changes to the plan. Whether, whether folks want to believe that or not, that's certainly up to them. Just the significant changes that, that certain folks were looking for were not going to be performed, but there were changes to the plan made after public comment. There were multiple changes, and we posted those changes to the website after the public comment period. Understood about what Ms. McDonald was saying, that the Planning Commission meeting did happen during the public comment period. However, that was, that was, went to Planning Commission to get the approval of Planning Commission for either the shared use path or the bike lanes. Neither were set in stone at that time. That was to go through the process on our end to make sure we were dotting every I and crossing every T. The public input at the time was in favor of the shared use path, so when we took it to the Planning Commission, it was yet again to see what the Planning Commission deemed as the recommended phase. And the Planning Commission recommended the shared use path. So at that time, we had both the public comment period favoring the shared use path and the Planning Commission favoring the shared use path. So we moved forward with the shared use path, while also taking into account the public comment period and certain changes that we can make to the plans without eliminating the shared use path. So we did take those into consideration, and we did make those adjustments as we went along. Now, again, to those folks that are here, I am sorry if this is ultimately not what you're looking for, but rest assured, the city did go through the process that we needed to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gordon. And it's worth noting too, the Planning Commission is also a public meeting that also takes public comment as well, so just another element that, that's worked in there too. All right, any further discussion on the complete streets ordinance? All right, on the motion and the second to refer to Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item nine, communication from President Keppel, Vice President Baker, and Councilmember Strebig regarding complete and active streets as education and advisory board.
Dear colleagues, as you know, at our recent council retreat, this body identified improving multimodal safety, the ability of all pedestrians, cyclists, mobility device users, and motorists to safely use our public right-of-ways as a continued top priority, a priority clearly shared by our constituents. Council leadership expressed in a written communication on the docket at the same meeting and previously at the retreat that achieving our multimodal safety goals will require multiple components and committed to introducing two pieces of legislation at tonight's meeting. The complete streets ordinance being introduced tonight that we just talked about, introduced, addresses infrastructure, and the ordinance following this communication addresses prevention and education through establishment of a citizen advisory board. Whereas the complete streets ordinance is meant to address safety through capital planning and construction and will provide a mechanism for citizen engagement and public comment through the Planning Commission, the Complete and Active Streets Education and Advisory Board's purpose is to support Board's purpose is to support safe multimodal transportation in between and beyond large-scale construction. As the following case advisory board ordinance notes, "The city continues to invest in long-term construction in furtherance of the interconnected goals and infrastructure of complete streets, active transportation, safe streets for all, ADA transition, and integrated wet weather improvement plans," that's the sewer work for those not familiar with that, "and these massive projects take time and extensive financial resources. As that work continues, case advisory board will help further a safe multimodal transportation culture, provide lived experience perspectives on quicker, short-term solutions, and help to educate and inform the community. We ask that this communication and the accompanying new joint Complete Streets Ordinance be referred to the appropriate committee, and we welcome feedback from all stakeholders." So I'll first move to refer the communication to Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and I'll just add, in light of some of the conversation we just had, you know, we do, I've talked about this before, we've had folks here talking to us about safety from all aspects. We've had folks asking about Madison Hilliard and adding various elements for pedestrians and cyclists, we've had folks here talking about the Bunce Road project, both for and against, we've had folks talking about the confusion of signage, or, or, we've also worked, members of this council and has worked with, and members of the administration have worked with the schools on promoting hike and bike to school, and the ability of our students to get safely to and from school, as well as working on the Safe Streets for All Plan. I've been really invested in the ADA transition work and making sure that our right-of-ways are able to be used by, by folks of all abilities and are safe for all those. And when we're talking about our rights-of-ways, we really need to make sure that it's really about the, all members of the public being able to use them and use them safely, and part of that is infrastructure, which is the Complete Streets Ordinance that was before this. Big infrastructure, things like when people say, hey, you should put a roundabout at Madison Hilliard, that's not something we're just going to throw up overnight, nor do, do I have the expertise to know how that would be designed, and we would need to get both that professional expertise of what is the best design there, as well as the lived experience of residents. So both things need to be true. For that big infrastructure, the planning commission has, our citizens who have significant background in those things, it also provides an opportunity for public engagement at the planning commission meeting with those members. This case advisory board is more talking about those in-between things, so when we're talking about, for instance, Madison Hilliard is an example, we're not going to put it around about in a weekend, right, or whatever other solutions that folks have suggested. Not saying that that is the right one, but people have made all sorts of suggestions that are major infrastructure. That's going to take a lot of research, the right expertise, and it's going to be very expensive. We also have the sewer work that things are tied into, so it's complicated. So, this is talking more about quick responses to those kinds of things, as well as education. So when we have folks arguing with each other on social media and here about what the signage means, is that a turn lane, is a bike-only lane, how does that work, you know, all sorts of things around pedestrian safety, so this, this is all that other work. You know, we talk about those three Es, that this is part of that, that work, so, just a little bit, not that I didn't already explain it in the letter, but just a little bit more as we've been talking about it in terms of some of these projects that are on everyone's mind. All right, other discussion from council members? All right.
I'm signed up for public comment for that as well. Matt Herberger.
Yeah, I, okay, I don't.
About ordinance seventeen dash twenty-five.
Right now, we're on the communication, but if you want to speak on it now, you can. Okay. Is there another sheet, Danielle?
I don't know what happened.
I just, I just have you on, I have you on Complete Streets, but just once, so.
Maybe there weren't two. Okay, regarding ordinance, I'm sorry, my name is Matt Herberger, fourteen forty-eight Bunce Road, regarding ordinance seventeen dash two-two zero five, two-zero-two-five. Normally, I would support this ordinance. The idea of creating a citizen advisory committee to assist in the design and implementation of the active, after, active streets slash complete streets program is an idea that is long overdue. Had you implemented, implemented this ordinance prior to the misguided, ill-advised, disastrous idea of a multimodal, oh, I wanted to take this moment to thank you for elucidating for me that these two ordinances aren't specifically about the Bunce project, or you dumbed it down for me, thanks. Anyway, had you implemented the ordinance prior to the misguided, ill-advised, disastrous idea of a multimodal path on Bunce Road, you may have saved the city and yourselves from this complete and utter loser of a plan. The irony is that this could have been avoided. The city itself has provided a list of resources that they supposedly used in developing this plan. In particular, I've read thoroughly the Ohio Department of Transportation Multimodal Design Guide. I wonder if any of you have, because it doesn't seem like it. And let me quote, "Two-point-four context-sensitive design," and I know you quoted this in your paperwork, but it certainly doesn't reflect it in your plans. "Context-sensitive design asks questions first about the need and purpose of the transportation project, and then equally addresses safety, mobility, and the preservation of scenic, aesthetic, historic, environmental, and other community values. It results in a project that is sensitive to and incorporate local circumstances and priorities, and can generate greater community support." These people at ODOT wrote some really good stuff, I wish you'd read it. And further, and most importantly, they read, they state, "In this multimodal plan, all of the tools described in this chapter contribute to the planning process. However, no tool is a substitute for public engagement. Involving the public in the planning and project development process is an essential tool in the planning and design of multimodal transportation facilities. It builds public trust in the process, improves the overall quality of work, ensures that the project aligns with local needs and priorities, and encourages community ownership of the final result." Really wise words, apparently no one read them. People who walk and bike in the community have the best knowledge of current conditions, as well as specific opinions on areas that need new facilities, or current facilities that may need design changes. Opinion and feedback of interested users who do not walk, bicycle, or use transit regularly or at all should also be sought to provide input regarding which facilities or programs would enable them to use multimodal transportation options. Designers should also consider hosting walk-and-bike audits with local stakeholders. Walk-and-bike audits with local stakeholder, what a great idea. Actually get the community engaged to better understand safety issues using both local knowledge and professional expertise." I couldn't have said it any better, thank you.
Thank you. All right. There seems to be some confusion about the signing in, I do not see anyone else signed in to speak on this communication. If there is anyone else who would like to speak, you can come up now. No? Okay. Further discussion from council members? So we're still on the communication regarding the citizen, the advisory board for that public input. Any further, so we have a motion in a second to refer to Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission?
Madam President.
Councilmember Bullock.
Just briefly, two thoughts. One is, I think, I welcome this discussion, I think the, the concept is a good one, want to understand it fully in the, in a public meeting, follow-up to this, but I, I agree strongly with the idea of mid-project updates, the, the things that come up two years after a project is maybe completed, a major construction project or an intersection is finished, and giving ourselves a system to, to be adaptive to that. I know Director Gordon and his team, and Chief Fisher and his team do, do respond, but this could potentially be another tool to us, for us. And I guess, Mr. Herberger, I would, I would like, I think your points were great, I, I would invite you to hold us accountable here, not the city team, who works at our direction. So, if there is resident frustration directed at me, and, and I think that's fair, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment after all?
Yes, if you want to come on up and I'll get you, yep.
Thank you, this is about the, the citizen advisory committee that you're proposing. I think this is an excellent idea, because a lot of good ideas did come out of the public comment on the Bunce Road project, and I was really surprised, for instance, that things like a turning lane at Franklin, things like the permeable pavers, things like the bump outs, the, the crossing, push-button warning, things like that did come out of the community, so, and those were extremely valuable, and I questioned why some of those things weren't in the project at the beginning, so I think this would be very valuable, and I hope some of the people that came up with those ideas are open to and willing to serve on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I tend to agree that more citizen engagement is better, and hence why I'm introducing this. Okay. And to Councilman Bullock's project, point as well, that I do want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our city team in bringing forth our shared goal on active, goals on active transportation. All right, okay, we're still on the communication, any further discussion? All right, hearing none on the motion to refer to Committee, to Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission, all those in favor? Aye, and that motion passes.
Item ten, ordinance seventeen twenty-two-five, an ordinance to take effect immediately enacting Chapter one sixty-one, Complete and Active Streets Education and Advisory Board of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lakewood, to establish a permanent, complete, and active streets education and advisory board for the purpose of collaborating with city officials regarding facilitating safe, effective, and enjoyable multimodal community usage of the public right-of-way corridors.
Move to refer to Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and we'll have, again, more discussion of this at that committee, that joint meeting of Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission, where there'll be even more opportunity for public comment on it, but if, if you can just go to the page about the makeup of the, I just wanted to quickly highlight, so, the way that this is currently structured, and of course, this is a proposal of an ordinance, not the final version, it hasn't been adopted, it's being referred to committee, is that it would include members of the community with varying types of lived experience, so joining their lived experience with the expertise of our staff here at City Hall, as well as a council liaison, to make sure that we're all in communication together. Currently, it's drafted to include someone with lived experience as a motorist, someone with a lot of lived experience as a pedestrian, someone with lived experience navigating the city rights-of-way with a disability, and cyclist, and a member of the city with navigating the city rights-of-way with children as well, particularly given our school transportation too. To the points about those best practices of having multiple lived experiences, that was taken into consideration in this ordinance, but looking forward to continuing that conversation with members of council, so I encourage you all, if you haven't already, to read through it, so that we can continue that conversation. Okay, there's a motion in a second to refer the ordinance to the Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission, any further discussion from council members? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, and that motion passes.
Item eleven, report from the March meeting of the Tree Advisory and Education Board.
Councilmember Evans?
Dear colleagues, on Wednesday, April ninth, the Tree Advisory Board met to discuss various topics, including the tree giveaway program, the board's annual report and message to City Council, and general ways to increase awareness of the importance of trees in our community and to increase our tree canopy. The Free Tree Program has seen another successful year, with most trees spoken for, usually picked up by residents Saturday, April twenty-sixth, with members of the board and other volunteers coordinating pickup. During our meeting, the board also discussed the mist of, mix of tree species available and the possibility of adjusting that mix in the future, to years to meet residents' needs. The board also discussed educational programming to increase awareness of tree importance and to help people understand the differences between tree species and appropriate usage. Members of the board are researching differing types of programs, including becoming an arboretum city. If any members of council or others in the community have questions about the Tree Advisory Board or its programming, please don't hesitate to contact me. Respectfully, Brian Evans. Move to receive and file this communication.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, and that motion passes.
Item twelve, communication from Lakewood Youth Council regarding twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four slate of nominees.
Councilmember Strebig?
Sure. On behalf of the Lakewood Youth Council, Dear Mayor George and members of City Council, the current list of members of the Lakewood Youth Council appears above. It has come to our attention that the slate of nominees for membership should be submitted to the mayor and Lakewood City Council each year. Our records don't contain confirmation that this has taken place since twenty-twenty-one, so we now submit for record a list of the members selected each year from twenty-twenty-two. I'm not going to read all their names to you, you can see the, the young people here that are participating, but I think their intent is to get back on track with reporting and to catch up with what they've missed. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that update.
Wait, I'm sorry to interject, it's just my daughter's on that list for twenty-twenty-two, and her name's missing. But it's going to be public record. It's Herberger, H-E-R, her first name's Kai, C-H-A-I, one thousand two hundred and twenty-two.
Sure, we can certainly, that's just a clerical thing, we can correct that, and this is actually a communication to us about it, but we can certainly update that.
Just a moment, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry for the interruption.
Sure. So we will first move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, and that motion passes.
Item thirteen, communication from Building Commissioner Parmley regarding Building Safety Month twenty-twenty-five.
Building Commissioner Parmley.
Madam President, members of council, Division of Housing, excuse me, Division of Housing and Building would like to participate in ICC's Building Safety Month for, pretty sure it's our sixth year. The campaign raises awareness about critical building issues from structural integrity to energy conservation. This year's campaign is game on, each week of the month of May is highlighted with essential topics in the industry. The model ICC codes are adopted by Ohio, they're altered to meet our specific region, then they're enforced through all eighty counties in the state. We are planning a no-cost-to-the-city campaign, with each week's topic featured on our housing page, as well as social media rollouts. The ICC International Code Council is made up of sixty-four thousand members, including the staff of the City of Lakewood Building Department. We work together to provide the community with inspections and knowledge to ensure that structures are safe to work, live, and play. We would greatly appreciate your support in Building Safety Month twenty-twenty-five. Respectfully, Building Commissioner Christopher Parmley.
Thank you, Commissioner Parmley. I'll move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and thank you, Commissioner Parmley and your team, for educating our public about safety, so, thank you. All right, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, and that motion passes.
Item fourteen, Resolution twenty-twenty-five-nineteen, a resolution declaring May twenty-twenty-five Building Safety Month within the City of Lakewood.
Move to it up.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, and that motion passes.
Item fifteen, communication from Mayor George regarding City Hall space study.
Mayor George.
Good evening. I'm not going to read the entire communication, as it's quite long and detailed, but it's, it's essentially an update on our continued discussions regarding the future of this building as City Hall, so, we are looking for- future of this building as city hall. So we are looking forward to having robust discussions on this in the Committee of your choosing. Thank you.
Thank you. There is significant information in this communication, so I encourage members, if you haven't already, to please read through it, as well as members of the public who are interested in this topic. I will first move to refer to Committee of the Whole?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 16, Communication from Assistant Planning Director Boss Regarding Lakewood Zoning Refresh Update Preliminary Recommendations.
Director Byington?
Thank you, President Keppel and members of council. Last month, the city's zoning refresh project moved through another milestone with the completion of the preliminary recommendations report. This report was drafted by and represents the culmination of the stakeholder engagement, community survey, and existing conditions and conformity analysis work from the project consultant team at Housel Levine. Preliminary drafts of this report were reviewed with both the city administration, as well as the zoning policy advisory committee. The intent of this communication is to provide the report to all members of council with an opportunity for more detailed discussion in committee as we prepare to continue our work by translating and refining the recommendations into updated district and youth standards, development and sign standards, and subdivision standards, zoning procedures, and definitions. All updated standards, procedures, and definitions will be worked through various steps of drafting, engagement, review, and refinement before eventually being captured and draft legislation for council consideration. As stated in the introductory communication from last September, at each step, information and engagement opportunities will be published at the project website. Sincerely, David Boss.
Thank you. I will, I'm gonna, we'll move to refer to Housing Planning and Development?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? I'll just add, Vice President Baker and I have been serving as the council representatives on Z-PAC, and it's been extremely interesting. I wouldn't have guessed prior to serving on council how interesting zoning could be, and I'm sure most members of the public don't necessarily share that enthusiasm, but until you get into it and you realize how much some of these rules really affect how people can use their property, there's also elements around equity, for instance, about being able to do first-floor units in a commercial property, which includes, which increases the number of housing for folks with disabilities, so things like that. There's a lot of really interesting ideas being talked about in this. So I look forward to having that conversation with council on where we are so far with that. So we have a motion and a second to refer to Housing Planning and Development. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yeah, Councilman Bullock.
So this is one I look forward to as well. Appreciate and agree with everything you just laid out. And it's something I need to learn myself. It's not my field, and it's a technical, legal, and beyond legal, it's, you know, property management, it's design, it's a bunch of layers. So I think this is one that we on council would, you know, do well to spend some time with and be thoughtful about. We also just had a big, the previous item about reconsidering potentially city hall space and how we use it. That's another big topic, and the active transportation, complete streets ordinance, and that's another big topic, so we're going to be busy. So, you know, I welcome your thoughts about how we can make sure that we're having enough time, attention, and so forth, because for us to make a thoughtful and informed choice on these decision points, it requires some preparation, some research, some expertise. And I just named three, if not four, big things. And so for city council to not just kind of prove at the end, but rather be informed and engaged in our deliberation, we're going to have to set ourselves up to be successful. So I don't know, I'm not coming with an answer here at all, but just flagging that desire, at least for me, to really be able to be thoughtful, without reading from scratch with my layperson's, non-attorney's eye, the whole zoning code, you know, not having the benefit of being one of the council liaisons to it. So that's not a critique at all, that's just an expression of desire to do a good job, because I think, as you said correctly, like, we don't do this frequently, it's got a far, potentially a far-ranging and significant impact. I recall when we were talking about the housing, the sale of some city-owned property resolution, the discussion came up that if we want to do more with some traditional properties, the way to accomplish that is actually in this item before us now. So, in other words, the affordable housing goals might actually be best achieved in this upcoming document as much as anything else.
Yes, so responding to a couple of, so this is one piece of that, you know, affordable housing strategy is complex, and of course, I was just looking at, we do have some of our affordable housing strategy documents on the website as well to work through. So not only zoning, but zoning is one of the tools connected to that, so that is true as well, and going also to the equity issues that I was talking about as well. The other thing is, part of when this last meeting, this is some of the components of the zoning code refresh, not the full zoning code refresh, and Vice President Baker and I had talked with Assistant Director Boss that we thought it was important, to your point, because this is large and complex. Currently, the zoning code is in multiple areas of the code, it's not one section of, you know, concrete zoning code, it lives throughout the code and, as well as policies, which means administratively, the staff here at city hall, when someone calls with a question, they're digging through 20 different places to potentially find the answer. So it's, as we're pulling this all together, we thought it's better to eat the elephant in small bites. So hence this desire to come to council at this point with some sections of the zoning code, some of the recommendations that have been looked at thus far. So this is not the entire thing, nor is it finalized. So sort of the idea being that this is an iterative process. So I would encourage councils, as you see attached to this letter, is the presentation that we got at the last Z-PAC meeting, or in anticipation of that last Z-PAC meeting, and then worked our way through. And I would encourage you all to look through that, and then we'll have an intelligent conversation. You can certainly talk with Assistant Director Boss and Director Byington before that as well. Councilmember Evans?
Yes, first, I want to thank the Planning Development Department for all the work you've put on this. This is a huge task. Again, this is once in a several generation in our, the way we're doing it. So, thank you. I know it's taken up a lot of staff time. I did read through the preliminary doc that we saw, it's in our thing today. And having some background in planning, I was very encouraged by the direction this is going. I think there's a lot of thoughtful recommendations, so I'm, I think it is speaking to a lot of the things that we're looking to, you know, address here as council. So I love the direction. Thank you for your work, and I'm really looking forward to the discussion moving forward. Thanks.
All right, further discussion? I'll echo my thanks to the Planning Department. You know, this, last year, we, as to Councilman Bullock's point, it was like, last year, we had, particularly towards the end of the year, we had a lot of heavy lifting to do with, and we had a brief reprieve at the beginning of this year, and we got a lot going on again. So never a dull moment, but we didn't come here to lay up, so here we go. All right, so on the motion to refer to Housing Planning and Development, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 17, Communication from City Planner Jones Regarding Village Bicycle Cooperative.
Director Byington, is this you again?
Thank you, President Keppel and members of council. As we continue to prioritize the active transportation plan and cyclist safety, we are making an effort to update existing and add additional signage to make the motorists aware of cyclist's presence and vehicle passing laws. New and updated signage will comply with the most recent edition of the Biodepartment of Transportation Multimodal Design Guidelines. As part of this project, signage will be added at 17 new locations identified by Village Bicycle Cooperative and reviewed by the Planning Department, as well as Public Works. Adding signage at these locations will warn motorists that cyclists may be present and that under law motorists are required to maintain a distance of three feet when passing. To support sign fabrication and installation at these 17 new locations, Village Bicycle Cooperative intends to donate $2,000 to the City of Lakewood. This donation will cover in full the cost of sign fabrication and installation at these 17 locations. This letter serves to formally thank Village Bicycle Cooperative and notify council of our acceptance of their donation towards providing signage that will make Lakewood streets safer and benefit all cyclists going forward. Sincerely, Sophia Jones.
Thank you. Move to receive and file?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and thank you to both the Planning Department and as well as Village Bicycle Cooperative for those signs as part of our continued education. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yep, Councilman Bullock.
I'm doing too much talking today, and it's all because there's no Baker to second anything. But thank you for the work in getting this, these signs, and compliments to Sophia Jones, who's doing very collegial work to facilitate the coordination between schools, the city, parent groups, on the walk-and-bike-to-school efforts. And this is important, this is a great example of some of what Councilman Evans and others, and I've been calling for, which is education. So even in the, you know, I've got three devices up here, but yard signs, road signs, those work too, kind of simple and genius to say, give people passing distance and passing ways. Actually, I would like to also compliment, I know the mayor's office put out a newsletter recently, which was another good step on the education. I thought there was very clear traffic safety, education, you know, here's what this means, here's what that doesn't mean. So already, city hall's getting a start on some of what we propose, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to receive and file? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 18, Liquor Permit Notice for Kennelworth Tavern.
I don't believe we have the report yet. Is that correct, Director Vago?
That's correct, Madam President.
Okay, so we'll move to defer?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. So we are at public comment, and I'll go, I have Bob Neff, who's been waiting patiently, please come on up. And the microphone's already on, so when you get up here, you can just rename it.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak. This has to do with Bunce Road Project. I found out some information tonight I didn't know, and it was brought up that a lot of this planning had been done in the Planning Commission. I've had experience with the Planning Commission, and it was over a relatively, relatively large endeavor. And it worked out really well. It worked out very nicely for the residents, and I think it worked out nicely on the other side. And so I agree that that was the place to start discussing the Bunce Road Project. The only thing is, I don't think too many people on Bunce Road received information from the Planning Commission. And that's sad, because if that's where the work was done, that's where we would have showed up. That's not what I planned on talking about when I came up here. I would hope that maybe some leeway would be given to the Bunce Road people to speak their, speak their piece, and hopefully have some input, even at this later time. And in regards to the path, about 40, 50 years ago, and about 60 pounds ago, I was a bike rider. My wife and I rode bikes. I was very much opposed to riding in the streets of Lakewood, only because I didn't think I would have much of a chance against a car if something were to happen. And we were lucky enough to be able to put our bikes on the back of our car and ride in metro parks. I do understand that transportation in Lakewood, some people have to rely on bikes. I am not anti-bike. But I think that putting a multi-use path on Lakewood and inviting more bikers, rollerbladers to Bunce Road is sort of inviting a mishap that could be avoided. What I was going to say was, three years ago, about three, three and a half years ago, my car was parked in my driveway facing the street, about 15 feet off the sidewalk. It was right about time when the high school was letting out, and a young boy was riding down the sidewalk, lost, lost control. I did not see this, my neighbor saw it. Lost control, came up about 15 feet where my car was parked, hit the car, didn't do much damage to the car, his bike was rideable, but he hit the car, he fell over. By the time I heard it and got out, he was on the bike, and he said, "I'm sorry, I lost control, I'm okay, bye." And he just went on his way. That was, that was, that was lucky, because if he had lost control and gone the opposite way, he would have ended up in the middle of Bunce. And I can think of about 24 streets right off the top of my head. If I ended up in the middle of that street, I would rather be in the middle of that street than in Bunce. Bunce is a very busy street, you all know that. So I don't know if it was, maybe this multi-use path came up about the time the work came up to discuss on the sewers in Bunce, and it was just a happenstance that this is, this was a time to try to, try to put a multi-use path in. Maybe it was just the luck of the draw, but I could think of many, many other streets that might be safer to have a multi-use path for bikers, rollerbladers, skateboarders, than Bunce. And unfortunately, this may be a little, little too late for the input, but I would hope that word would get around through city hall, that more information has to be given to people on the front end, and they can discuss these things in the Planning Commission when, you know, where it's really can be changed and listened to. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Neff, for your thoughtful comments. Okay, then I'm going to go to Marchila?
Yep.
Yep, come on up. You'll have five minutes, up to five minutes, and if you want to state your name, and if you feel comfortable, your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
I shouldn't need five minutes. So my name is Marchila Ben. I am a new business owner in Lakewood. The address is 17106 Detroit. The business is Coop Space. And I just want to quickly just tell you about the business. So, Coop Space is an elegant art gallery, designed to provide guests with a top-tier experience. Art, music, and a modern feel make Coop Space the ideal space to entertain, connect with others, and immerse yourself in a curated collection of artworks. Guests are also welcome to purchase any art that they admire on display. Coop Space is also available for guests and artists to host sophisticated events and exhibitions. The venue offers a lush, modern feel, making it an ideal space for an art walk, for art enthusiasts, an event, and more. Coop Space provides a relaxed and inviting atmosphere for appreciating art and connecting with others. We are currently partnering with youth development organizations for art programs, and have a relationship with Cleveland Job Corps, it's a recreation program, providing artistic experiences. And Coop Space is not just a gallery, it's an experience that celebrates elegance, creativity, love, and culture. And I just wanted to share that information. You guys might be, you might have seen, because we've been developing for, since February, so I know we see a lot of people passing by, peeking through the window. So I know we see a lot of people passing by peeking through the window, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself and share about Coop Space and invite you guys to come. Well, we technically opened last week, so if you wanted to stop.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And we, we often have our, the Chamber of Commerce, I don't know if you, did you do a grand opening?
We didn't.
Okay, so a lot of times the Chamber of Commerce will help organize that with us and, and, but, I mean, well, I'm sure council members would be happy to stop by as well, but would love to celebrate. Councilman Steiner?
Yes, thank you, President Koppel. Could you give the name of your business again and your address?
The name of the business is Coop Space, C-O-A-P-H, Space. The address is 17106 Detroit. So we're between La Salsa and what is it, Daystar?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Brian Higgins.
Hi, I want to talk, I'm a member of Preserve Our Schools. I'm sure everyone heard on city council. Mayor, thank you for your support this past week. We're here now to ask city council to show support. It is no longer, it's no longer, city council can no longer hide in the background and hide behind, there is a separation of powers. If they close our elementary schools, we know traffic will increase, pedestrian safety will be at risk, environmental impacts, housing values will drop. That is now a city issue. We need city council to come out and support all seven schools staying open. So I am here tonight to put city council on notice. We have reached out to thousands of our residents, to community meetings, social media, personal phone calls. Many of those residents do not understand why city council's not taking a more active approach. Two of you sit on the task force, so to claim you, you have no skin in the game, that's untrue. You sit on the task force.
Please address your remarks to the chair, Mr. Higgins.
Like I said, two of you sit on the task force. I'm not, I didn't say anyone. I said two sit on the task force. It's no longer okay to hide. Your city needs you. You were elected to lead, so start leading. My last comment, the gaslighting, you got, just the gaslighting. We've, we've known we had a problem at Hilliard and Madison for years. For the city council president to say, a roundabout just can't come in over the weekend, or it costs money, you've known about it for years. Why haven't you acted? Why haven't you acted? None of you, Tom U, none of you have acted. It's just gaslighting our community. That's not right. It's not right you hide. You're elected to lead. It's okay to have a stance, even if that stance is not popular. We need you to lead, lead. If they shut our schools, our city is going to suffer. A city that is already teetering. Do you not listen to when residents come and speak out to Board Education? They cite walkability in neighborhood schools as a reason to move to Lakewood. If that isn't enough to get you off the sideline and to speak out about keeping our schools, I don't know what else is. Thank you for your time.
Just to be clear on the Madison and Hilliard, that intersection was redesigned with a traffic engineer and is on course to be done by a county engineer. So it's a little disingenuous to say gaslighting, to say that we couldn't throw in a roundabout overnight. If you know of someone who can throw in a roundabout overnight, please pass along my information. All right, next up is Matt Herberger.
I'm here to express my objection to the multimodal path planned for Bunce Road. You know, Councilman Bullock, thank you very much for, for pointing out that, you know, I shouldn't, let me say, I respect all of you here. I know you have a hard job, I do, and I appreciate what you guys do. Whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I know you're here and you at least think you're doing the right thing. We may disagree on that. And I want you to understand that my apparent anger is not anger, it's actually despair, and it's frustration. It's despair because I see like, as if I'm the watchman on the Titanic, this terrible idea, and I can't do anything about it. I can't stop you from doing it. I can't get you to change your idea, no matter how many hundreds of people that I get sign a petition. So it is despair, and it's frustration too, because it's frustration because, you know, I quoted that thing about the Complete Streets Initiative and ODOT, and I really read that over and over again. I've read it many times, and I thought, that's really how this process was supposed to work? This is how that path was supposed to be built on Bunce? There was supposed to be community outreach? And I understand, right, from a legal perspective, you guys gave us the letters, and there was a community meeting, and there was a Planning Commission. You know, I have a disagreement about someone announcing a plan that only has two predetermined outcomes, and then a month later, you vote on it and decide and say, the public comment was open for all of us? I disagree. It barely, it took us thirty days just to let our neighbors know what was going on, because no one could quite understand what was going on. And I do feel like we were robbed. I feel like we, you know, I look at the bike Lakewood people that come here, and you guys welcome them with open arms, and you know them, and you planned with them, and you worked with them. And I say to myself, what, how do I get that invite to the table? How, how do my neighbors get that invite? Is twenty, thirty, forty years of being a homeowner and a citizen of this city, it just doesn't, what, it doesn't count for anything anymore? You know, I mean, so when, when I come here and I'm passionate, it's not anger, it's frustration, because I think even you, Madam Chairwoman, know, with that legislation that I believe you are part of introducing, you see the problem. You see what we've brought, you understand. There's a lot of people out here that we feel left out of the equation. We feel like it's a top-down decision, and nobody, listen, maybe it would have ended up being the same plan that it is now, but had, had we been invited, at least you would have the community buying, you'd have the community to say, they did reach out to us, they did talk to us, they actively engaged us, we were part of the planning process, and this is what the plan is. And there would be nobody here, there wouldn't be signs up and down Bunce Road. You know, those signs up there tell you, they do. None, none of us feel like we were invited, that we don't feel like we were part of it. And we're citizens, we're homeowners, we're, we're long, long, long time residents. And I don't think it's really asking much, you know? It, it's frustrating to tell me the ship has sailed, you know? Maybe it has, but it is frustrating that there, there wasn't that outreach to us, that there wasn't a, we could have been, I, you know, very briefly, I have a very long relationship with Lakewood. My parents have lived here since 1974, okay? Fifty-one years. I still go over to their house every day. Now, I've moved away, I've moved, but when, I, I lived in Washington DC for seven years, New York City for ten. Guess where I moved back to? All the places I could move back to, even in northeast Ohio. I moved back to Lakewood. I love Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herberger. Next up is Kim McDonald again.
Thank you for this opportunity. I, I just want to read a short comment that one of my neighbors made when I passed around a paper petition, so not everyone's signing on, online on change.org, but this is what, and I didn't get permission to use this person's name, and I feel like they're not going to use the e-comment, so, so anonymously, I'll read what was said. It said, "In a city with continuing accidents with pedestrians, you are adding another layer of liabilities to the city and street residents. This street is not monitored for speed, which is a huge problem already and has not addressed in many years. This plan is not in the best interest of even those that would use it. Traffic from pulling in and out of drives, a disaster in the making if the plan continues on the street." Okay, so that's a lived experience of, to use your term, of one of my neighbors. And now my comments. The big question to me is, do we really need a shared use path on Bunce Road? You know, obviously, we don't believe so, and forty-nine, no, forty-eight out of the fifty commenters in, on the initial city period said, "No, we don't need this," and two of them said, "Well, with reservations." They thought it was okay. The city has embarked upon this plan because they're tearing up Bunce Road, undertaking these major infrastructure repairs. Were, were this not being done? Bunce Road hopefully would never have been considered for this project. There are so many other places that a shared use path could be placed, or some other kind of bike infrastructure. Those other places do not have the extremely high vehicle traffic, including ambulances picking up and taking patients from the nursing home, assisted living, senior residents, multiple times a day. I don't have a count on that, but I'll tell you, it's multiple times. Additionally, Bunce Services, a fire and police emergency wrote, vehicular traffic is very high due to the gas stations, the proximity to Ninety, Lakewood High, and St. Giant Eagle, and the close by restaurants. Pedestrian, pedestrian traffic is high due to students and staff walking to and from the high school, the bus, bus, the, the Detroit bus route, and the aforementioned stores and restaurants, cyclists, rolling wheels, et cetera. Additionally, there are many people walking their dogs or strollers. And I question if, whether any traffic studies were done on all these different modes of transportation that people are presently using. And that's a question I have into the city, and I understand they'll be answering that. The only explanation given by the Active Transportation Plan on the website was that Bunce has the, quote, "potential for accidents." And I'm saying potential is not the same thing as actually having accidents. However, if one wants to consider the potential for accidents, there's clear potential for accidents, the, the potentials, it's, could greatly increase. The plethora of driveways, the commercial residential locations are potential accidents, especially Getco, at Lucas, Sunoco, Giant Eagle. Getco is probably the most dangerous, based on the incline of their driveway, that drivers will often pull right up onto the sidewalk before they are looking to see if anyone's walking or coming down the sidewalk in any manner. They pull way up to see the traffic turning on Detroit, onto Bunce, and coming south from Bunce. It's kind of a disaster, it's very busy there. So, you know, the ODOT Design Guide did state that plants are not appropriate for areas with a lot of driveways. Well, I mean, I guess that's the reality of our city, you know, there are a lot of driveways pretty much everywhere. But especially these commercial driveways, and especially these heavy intersections, I think are a real issue. It, the path would appear to make cycling safer, but in fact, I think it increases the potential for accidents at some of the busiest intersections at Madison, at Franklin, Detroit, and then the intersections at Merle and at Athens, you know, are still very busy, not quite as busy as the major ones I just mentioned. But I believe, you know, obviously, from the issues that have been at Hilliard and Madison, it's gonna be the same thing on our, on our intersections. So, so those are some of the concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is Jim Rumsey.
Thank you for this opportunity. Jim Rumsey, Lewis Drive. And I just want to make a couple of comments about the Elementary Task Force. I am a member of that task force. I do not speak on behalf of the task force tonight. These are, views are my own. I just wanted to ask the council to, please keep in mind that as a task group, we are not making a final decision. We are helping the superintendent, who then ultimately makes comments to the Board of Directors, or excuse me, the School Board. I'd like to just dispel a couple of things, is that through our work, which we've been working since last fall, we have not made any recommendations. We are, we started out with seven scenarios that were provided to us. We are not beholden to those scenarios. We were told that we were not beholden to those. We have talked about things that were not part of those seven scenarios. Those are still active discussions. So again, just let it know that amongst your ward constituents, we have not made a decision. We are working hard, we are keeping in mind all the things that all the other groups in the area have talked about. We recognize that there is a lot of emotion that goes into this process. We are gonna make what we think, hopefully at the end of the day, is a sound decision on behalf of the city, but again, no decisions have been made. That is a common refrain when people find out that I'm on the task force. They say, "Wow, you've already made your decision." Not true. And I've been in the room for every single meeting since the fall. And so again, it's a polarizing topic, I understand, but no decision has been made. And please let us, and not demonize us, for conversations that we're having. We're trying to do what's best for the city, and then it will take its course from there. So happy that you've listened, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, and thank you for your service on that task force, Mr. Rumsey. As to our comments earlier about the importance of citizen engagement, you know, it's an excellent example of citizen engagement. Okay, next up is Amy Herberger.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Amy Herberger. I represent residents of Bunce Road who are deeply concerned about the proposed multimodal path that will run directly in front of our homes, replacing sidewalks, and removing every existing tree along the street, my street. This concern is based on actual data from Osborne Engineering, not the city's idealized renderings. We are not, we are asking you to reconsider this alignment, not because we oppose multimodal infrastructure, but because this specific proposal conflicts with safety goals, policies, and values in Lakewood's own Complete Streets Ordinance and Active Transportation Plan. The Joint Ordinance and Plan adopted April 15, 2024, calls for street designs that ensure safe access for all people, pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities. But this plan for Bunce is not a complete street. It's a narrow, one-size-fits-all design that doesn't safely serve all modes or users. Lakewood proudly calls itself a walking school district, and according to the city's own Active Transportation Plan, sixty-one percent of caregivers said intersection safety was their number one concern. Yet this design has ninety-five driveways and a total of one hundred and sixteen intersections, each one a new conflict point that dozens of daily chances for collision with, or near misses. A study in Accident Analysis and Prevention found shared use paths have 2.6 times more pedestrian cyclist crashes than separate facilities. The Federal Highway Administration reports over forty percent of bike pedestrian crashes happen at intersections and driveways. In 2019, JAMA studies found forty-five percent of e-scooter injuries occur on a shared use path, largely due to unpredictable speeds. If safety is truly the priority, especially within a half a mile of the school, where sixty-seven percent of fatal pedestrian crashes already occur within, why add risk instead of reducing it? Has the city even asked the crossing guards? They see near misses between bikes and pedestrians every day. Let us know what you find, and put it in the record. If Bunce Road is considered a Tier One Transportation Project, then under the Complete Streets Ordinance, it must include a specific element from the Active Transportation Plan and undergo Planning Commission review with meaningful opportunity- Planning Commission review with meaningful opportunities for public input. But here's the reality, over 600 residents have signed a petition opposing this alignment. Dozens of yard signs line Bunce Road with a clear message, "This does not reflect public input." Okay? If that level of organized, visible and sustained feedback does not qualify as meaningful public engagement, then what does? Was this design ever truly reviewed through the proper public channels? If not, it may fall short of the accountability now required by Section 901.23 of the Lakewood codified ordinances. The signs on Bunce Road tell a different story than the narrative of public support. They're not just opposition, they're a reminder that people, the people most affected were not meaningfully included in the process. This plan would also eliminate every mature tree along the path. According to American Forests, a mature tree removes up to 48 pounds of CO2 per year, reduces local air temperatures by up to nine degrees and increases nearby property value by up to 15%. That's not just shade, it's climate resilience, air quality and community wealth. Once these trees are gone, they take generations to replace. Even the city's own 2022 Tree Action Plan acknowledges this. So what are we doing? It also raises serious emergency access concern. The Victoria Transport Policy Institute warns that shared use corridors in residential areas can reduce emergency access, especially when buffers are removed or street width is narrowed. Cities like Boulder, Colorado have already seen these unintended consequences. Increased noise, speeding e-bikes, safety complaints from residents and longer emergency response ties. If those are the outcomes elsewhere, why repeat mistakes here? And finally, maintenance is already an issue. I personally reported problems on Bunce and Detroit for more than eight years. Crumbling curbs, poor drainage, major potholes and inadequate snow removal, especially near schools. If we're struggling to maintain what we have now, how can we maintain a 10-foot wide asphalt path that requires even more care? When the, where's the budget, the staff or the plan for long-term maintenance? In conclusion, when proposed path does not meet the city's own definition of a complete street, we're not against infrastructure. We're asking for smarter alignment based on safety, research and the real life experiences of families, seniors and children who live on Bunce Road. Please consider the alignment. Let's build a more connected Lakewood with, without compromising safety, environment and neighborhood character. Because at the end of the day, if it doesn't work for the people who live there, it doesn't work. Thank you for your time.
Understood. Thank you. All right, next up is Danica Herberger.
Good evening, Mayor, oh, oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor George and City Council. My name is Danica. I'm an eighth grader, grade student who lives on Bunce Road. I'm here today because I care deeply about my community and want to speak up about the proposed multimodal pathway for Bunce Road, a plan that I and many other students strongly oppose. From what I understand, most likely the main reason for choosing Bunce Road for the multimodal pathway is to give students a route to high school. Because aside from the high school, the bu, the lane would just lead to places like Route 90 or even a junkyard. Hardly useful or safe destinations for riders. And continuing with this point, when I look at who's actually riding on Bunce Road, the truth is, there aren't many students. To be sure, I wasn't the only that felt this way. I talked to a bunch of local students about it. Almost everyone I spoke to agreed that riding on Bunce Road feels unsafe and uncomfortable. There is a constant flow of traffic from nearby businesses like Getco, Giant Eagle, Moons and many others. Cars are always pulling in and out of parking lots and driveways and the no, noise alone makes it stressful. It doesn't feel like any place where you could safely walk, ride, bike or use any other transportation. So they usually use a side street. As most prefer using a side street when we are going, routes that are, they prefer routes that are quieter, calmer and feel much safer. These are streets you can usually enjoy riding your bike without worrying about getting too close to speeding cars or distracted drivers. Sorry, excuse me. So this leaves only the kids on Bunce that are forced to use it because it doesn't make sense for us to move onto a side street. It also is worth pointing out, there's not many families with children living directly on Bunce Road. So even if the bike lane was added, it wouldn't serve a large number of students. The few that do live here are likely due to walk due to closeness. So this removes a large portion of who you're making this bike path, this path for. If the city's goal is to encourage more biking and make our community more bike friendly, I think that's a great idea. But this plan is not the right way to do that. You can, you can't just paint a lane on a busy, noisy street and expect students to feel safe using it. The core problems, traffic, safety and environment, aren't going away with the lane. You can add curbs and other bells and whistles, but this won't stop the core problems. If anything, it may create even more confusion and even more risk if the path isn't used the way it's intended. To show how strongly students feel about this, I took it upon myself to gather signatures from my school. And in just two days, I collected 70 signatures from students who oppose this plan. These aren't just names on a paper. These are voices of young people who live in this community, who ride around this area and who want their opinions to be taken seriously. Many of us will be attending high school soon and we're the very people this plan is supposed to serve. But right now, it doesn't feel like we're being heard. It feels like this plan is moving forward just to check a box, to give the appearance of progression or inclusion, without really listening to the people it affects most. If the city truly wants to support students, then we need a plan that reflects actual experiences, not just an idea that looks good on paper. In closing, I urge you to reconsider the Bunce, the Bunce Road path proposal. If it doesn't meet the needs of students and it doesn't address our safety concerns, then it's not the solution we're looking for. There are better ways to promote biking and making our streets safer, but this plan is not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do, I always, I always thank everyone for being here, but I do always particularly enjoy hearing from you, so thank you for being here. So I'll just, that's the end of our folks we have signed in for public comment. Before I close that off, did anyone else wish to speak this evening? Hasn't had a chance? Okay. All right, so I just want to make a few comments of, based on everything we've heard tonight, so as well as we've been hearing. We've been, earlier this evening, prior to the full council meeting, we had a meeting with the Tree Education Advisory Board, which is one of our citizen groups that helps us promote our tree can, promote and expand our tree canopy as well as education, as the name suggests, and advises the city on that. You know, that kind of, and I, as I mentioned, hearing from Mr. Rumsey about being on the school task force, which has, I forget how many, but a pretty large number of citizens on that as well. We have a number of citizen advisory groups. Tonight, I proposed adding another citizen advisory group. Citizen engagement is one of my main, has been and continues to be one of my main folk I, as a council member myself, and I know many of my council colleagues feel similarly and we all, a lot of us ended up here because we started off being very engaged, serving on these advisory boards and task force or being activists, as I was, in the community and slowly moving our way up into wanting to get more and more engaged or seeing, as we talked about earlier tonight, about now State Senator and Minority Leader Antonio started as a councilwoman because she came here and didn't feel like her voice was heard about a skate park, which we now have and have just expanded. So sometimes these things start as a kernel and grow and people get engaged. We also, I have, remember hearing from a public commenter earlier in these past few weeks about, you know, about hearing, hearing that public feedback and learning and adjusting. And so, you know, change can be hard. And we also don't, aren't all going to always agree on the best path forward and we have to make the best decisions that we can. And certainly having citizen engagement is the best way for us to do that. That doesn't mean everybody gets what they want. In fact, in a democracy, a lot of times, most of us don't get everything we want. But having a way for us to have those dialogues is really important and that's a big part of why I felt important to introduce the case advisory board and why we've been, council and administration have been working diligently on finding the right Complete Streets Ordinance and continuing to work on our Active Transportation Plan. The IWP, the Climate Action Plan and all these master plans that take into account citizen engagement, the Active Transportation Plan, as I mentioned, with the Safe Streets for All, that works with the schools and connects to having the seven elementary schools. It's all interconnected and it takes a lot of citizen engagement. So that is something that certainly continue to be dedicated to and really appreciate everyone contributing their time to try to make the city better. And we understand that sometimes that comes across as frustration when, you know, you don't feel like you're getting where you need, where you want to go. But please do realize that I think all of us up here take your input seriously and value it. And we want to get it into the process sooner rather than later, particularly as we move forward. All right, other council members' comments? Announcements? Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, Chair. Councilwoman Marks and myself have spent some time working with a partner of the community, the Barton Communities, at a fundraiser that's going to be happening on May 17. It's called Mrs. Roper's Romp, after the beloved Three's Company character, so it's going to be lots of fun. It's Barton Communities, if you're not familiar, they do a lot of really great programming for our senior population here in Lakewood, particularly at the Westerly. So it's a great cause. It's from 1:00 to 5:00 on May 17, starting at McGinty's and going to ending at Mahalls, which will be called the Regal Beagle for the day. So come out and join us, it's going to be a lot of fun. Tickets, you can find them at ticketstripe.com, search for Mrs. Roper's Romp Bar Crawl, or you can find them on social at Barton's Communities Activity Center on Facebook and Barton Center at Instagram. So come out and join us, I'll be there. It's going to be really good people watching, too.
Will you be wearing a romper?
I don't.
That'll sell some tickets, I think.
Didn't get a captain yet, so we don't know, we'll see.
So are you going to be Jack Tripper?
Maybe Larry Dallas, maybe, we'll see.
You have to get your ticket to find out.
Yes.
All right, Councilman Marks.
Yes, I encourage you all to come out, too. And for all of you women, we can all have an opportunity to dress up as Mrs. Roper, so come, come join the fun. Chief, I'd love to see you there.
Other announcements from council members? Announcements from the administration? All right, no further business to be before council, without objection, we're adjourned.